The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con.
Present.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Varmer.
Yo.
Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Present.
Alderman Orion. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Boyd. Eleven, present, you have quorum.
A quorum being present will be led in opening reflection and prayer by Reverend Anita Rogers.
Good morning. Thank you to the Board of Aldermen for having me. What an honor. As I reflect, leadership is not a magnetic personality that just as well be that of a smooth tongue and a pervasive mind. It is not making friends and influencing people. That is flattery. Leadership is lifting a person, our community's vision, high sights, the raising of a person's performance to a higher standard, the building of a personality beyond its normal limitation. As leaders, we have been graced with influence and trustworthiness that should never be taken for granted. As I reflect on the upcoming Martin Luther King holiday, I'm reminded of what made him such a successful leader, and that was the skill set of communication. Agree to disagree, but always make the common goal that of motivating, encouraging, and uplifting our communities. As Alpha Kappa Alpha Women, we will continue to cultivate high, scholastic, and ethical standards and service to all mankind. The commonality that we all possess is the dedication to service. This thread links the Aldermanic Council, Martin Luther King, and the women of Alpha Kappa Alpha intrinsically. In conclusion, leadership is not a task that's to be taken lightly, but an occasion that must be risen to. To the members of the Aldermanic Council and the women of Alpha Kappa Alpha, continue to rise. If you would bow your heads with me for a moment of prayer? Father God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we bless your high and holy name, oh God. There is absolutely nobody like you, God, in the heavens and the earth, oh God. So, Lord, I'm asking right now, God, that you would be present in this meeting on today, God, that you said that the government should be on your shoulders. So, Lord, I'm asking that as this council meets and going forward, that they would have the hearts of your people on their hearts, oh God. Lord, allow them to agree on what is best for the city and for the people. Lord, we bless you and we honor you. It is in Jesus' name that I pray, and it is so, amen.
We will dispense with the regular order of business to take up the special order of the day, and we will begin by taking up the courtesy resolution calendar. Alderwoman from the 12th, you are recognized on the suspension of the rules to introduce resolution number 179.
Thank you, madam. Madam President, members of the Board, I'd seek to suspend the rules so that I can introduce resolution number 179.
Second. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 12th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing resolution number 179. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Varmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Boyd. Twelve aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderwoman from the 12th. Please place resolution number 179 at the end of the courtesy resolution calendar.
Madam President, if you could, I would like it on first read. It's a 90-year-old resolution. I mean, it's a happy birthday resolution for a 90-year-old, and I want to speak to it just a moment if I can.
Okay. If you would not mind us doing the special order of the day first, and we'll come back because yours, doing it in numerical orders, yours will then be after that.
I'm fine, whatever you do, because I'm not doing it by regular procedure.
Okay. Sounds good to me. So with that, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on resolution number 176.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I would ask if Madam Clerk would read resolution 176.
Resolution 176 honoring Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Inc. was founded on January the 15th, 1908. Whereas the city of St. Louis is the home of the founder of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Inc., Ethel Hetchman-Law, and whereas the members of AKA Sorority Central Region stand firmly committed to improving economic equity and addressing racial barriers as catalysts for social justice. And whereas AKA Inc. also provides significant community service in the city of St. Louis, succeeding the motto of service to all mankind, and is dedicated to the well-being of the people and quality of life. Whereas January the 15th, 2024, is recognized as a national celebration of the establishment of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Inc. and institutionalizing the foundation and purpose of AKA Sorority Inc. And whereas this body enthusiastically endorses AKA Day, January the 15th, 2024, recommitting the members to engage in programs and activities to make the city of St. Louis a cultural city that promotes unity, alleviates problems in the undeserved communities, and calls on members of AKA Sorority to continue its mission for social justice, advocacy, and equality. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to recognize Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Inc., Central Region, and St. Louis Metropolitan Chapters for its commitment to social justice and advocacy and 116 years of community service. We further direct the Clerk of the Board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of the proceedings to prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented at a place and time deemed by the appropriate sponsor. Introduce this 12th day of January 2024 by the Honorable Shamene Clark Hubbard, 10th Ward Alderwoman, and co-sponsor Alderwoman Daniela Velazquez, Alderwoman of the 6th Ward.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk, and now I'd like to invite the ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority up to the dais, and while they come, I just want to continue this acknowledgement and gratitude for the daily service that they give in the community, right? And we know and we see them, and we admire them and the work they're doing, and it doesn't stop. And there are so many that reached out to me just this morning due to the weather. They're watching, they said they wouldn't be able to come, but that they will be watching and share and acknowledge, uplift, and encourage you all to continue the work that you do here, not just in the city of St. Louis, not just in our region, and not just but the world, we know. And so before I invite you all, your leadership to speak, I would be remiss if I didn't speak a few names. One is Dr. Gina Gun McClendon and her Good Trouble and the work that she did. She, I proudly say she was part of my kitchen cabinet. I never talked about it before, amen, that's right. I never talked about it before. It was part of my kitchen cabinet, and I often look back and miss it, send me, and lean on, still lean on them, and look forward with your leadership that reached out to me, Ms. Williams, to continue her legacy. But then here, right now, today, we know how this, you all's work continues daily. There's always a fight, right? And I would absolutely be remiss if I didn't ask, I'm getting a little shook up because of the connections here, but Madam President, I would ask if you could give us a moment of silence for Dr. Antoinette Bonney Candia Bailey, Vice President of Lincoln University, Vice President of Student Affairs, and their beloved soror in her transition.
If we could please bow our heads for a moment of silence.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. To the President, to the Board of Aldermen, members, to the constituents of the city of St. Louis. Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated was founded in 1908 by Ethel Hetchman-Law. She was a native of St. Louis. She was born and raised here. She attended St. Louis Public Schools. What this means is that Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, we are rooted here in the St. Louis community. It is our duty to follow the history of our predecessors, ensuring that the fair and equal rights of everyone is granted. It is our duty to recognize the needs of our community. It is our duty to be proactive in supporting our community, and it is our duty to serve mankind. On behalf of our Regional Director, Kiana Davis, and the body and members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, we would like to thank you for this resolution. We thank you for your time. We thank you for allowing us to spend time with you. We thank you for your passion that we hear in each of you and learning about the vision that you have and that you see for this city. This year, the stakes are high for all of us. We have upcoming elections and bills that would not only set us back as a human race, but dismantle us culturally and historically. It gives us peace to know that in this city, we are all here on one accord. We are under the guiding principles of improving the quality of life. And in this city, we have the mindset to break down the racial and socioeconomic barriers that affect our community. Again, I thank you. I thank you for this resolution, the members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. We thank you, and we will stay diligent in our mission going forward. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Bethany Williams, President of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Gamma Omega Chapter here in the city of St. Louis. I bring you greetings as my fellow coworkers and as an employee of the city of St. Louis, and thank you for this honor and this opportunity. As you know, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and the Metropolitan St. Louis Chapters, we continuously stand ready to fight for what's right for our citizens of St. Louis and make sure that we make a change in service to all mankind. So I say thank you for this honor on behalf of our local chapters, and thank you for having us today.
One of our favorite days here at the Board is when we do this each year, and we really just, I think, on behalf of the entire Board of Aldermen, want to thank you for all of your work, for all of your service. We see you everywhere, it seems like, you know, no matter what, you know, festival or community event, it's like you're always there, always engaged in the community, and exemplify what all of us need to be doing and learning and walking in your shoes. So is there any further discussion on the amount or on the part of members of the Board today? Alderman from the 3rd.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, one, would be reluctant if I didn't thank the members of AKA. You know, the President just mentioned that you all are out in the community doing the work and seeing you at polling places, seeing you, you know, at neighborhood events, and lifting up our community in such marvelous ways is always such a tremendous inspiration to so many of us. So I want to thank you all for all of your work, even though, you know, graduated college, you're still in the Greek life and carrying forward the organization, and it's so inspiring. I did not know that the founder was born and raised here in St. Louis, so that is new knowledge for me today, and I'm super proud of that. That is incredible. So thank you for sharing that with me, and I'll have to dig into that a little bit further offline, but I would also like to move that we pass this resolution in bank.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we make resolution number 176 in bank. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 12th, is your resolution supposed to be in courtesy resolutions or first reading of resolutions?
I was, I should have said, it can stay in courtesy if you let me speak to it. If I can't speak to it, then it needs to be in first read, because I do need to speak to this lady that's turning 90 years old and worked for the city.
Okay, then we're going. Okay, we'll go ahead and put it on first reading of resolutions, because we have a couple that need to be read today. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the courtesy resolution calendar.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we adopt the courtesy resolution calendar. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda placed in the Aldermen's Google Drive for your review.
Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendar? Alderwoman from the 13th.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to move Board Bill 98 to third reading, please.
Right. Madam Clerk, could you please move Board Bill number 98 to the third reading calendar? Consent calendar.
So noted.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 200 for.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 200.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 200. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Varmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanyay.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderwoman Keys. Thirteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th. If you could please place Board Bill number two at the end of the first reading of Board Bill.
So noted.
First reading of Board Bills.
Resolution 192, number not used this session. Board Bill 193 sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd and ordinance directing the director of streets pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394 to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the 57 and 5800 blocks of Woodland Avenue. Board Bill 194 sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd and ordinance directing the director of streets pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394 to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic at various locations on Gladys Avenue between the intersection of Gladys Avenue and Goodfellow Boulevard and Gladys Avenue and Riverview Boulevard. Board Bill 195 sponsored by Alderman Aldridge and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated November 14, 2023 for 1902 through 1904, Dodier Street area in the city of St. Louis. Board Bill 196 sponsored by Alderman Varmer and ordinance recommended by the planning commission on December 13, 2023 to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the A Single Family Dwelling District to F Neighborhood Commercial District in City Block 4075 so as to include the described parcels of the land in City Block 4075 and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill 197 sponsored by Alderwoman Keys and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated November 14, 2023 for 2601 Market Street area in the city of St. Louis. Board Bill 198 sponsored by Alderwoman Sanyay and President Green and ordinance adding the section to Section 3 of ordinance number 71620 codified in Chapter 3.160 of the city of St. Louis revised code of ordinance to include a new subsection, Chapter 3.160.030, requiring that the applicants for development tax incentives be current in the payment of all city property and earnings tax, and the applicants be current in the payment of bills for water and refuse services provided by the city at the time of application for tax incentives. Board Bill 199 sponsored by Alderwoman Sanyay and President Green and ordinance adding to Chapter 15 of the city of St. Louis revised code of ordinances, a new subsection, Chapter 15.190, to regulate the commercial use of drones and impose community-based safety regulations and restrictions on the operations of drones and other UAs that do not pre-exempt federal aviation rules or state laws, including a separability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 20 sponsored by Alderwoman Shamene Clark Hubbard. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Board Bill 200 sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and ordinance recommended by the Board of Espin and Apportement authorizing the Department of Health to accept the 2023 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Award up to $456,683 from the U.S. Department of Justice appropriating such funds to the Department of Public Safety, authorizing the expenditures of such funds to extent received, authorizing contracts and other documents to expend such funds to the extent received, and contain an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of Board Bills.
Madam Clerk, if you could please send Board Bill 200 to Public Safety.
So noted.
And with that, I realize I missed introduction of honored guests today, so we are going to go back to line item number five for one moment. Any introduction of honored guests? Any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I think he probably left already, but why not kick off the new year with introducing 14th Ward resident, city of St. Louis, Sheriff Vernon Betts, and also see former Alderman Frank Williamson from the Treasurer's Office here as my honored guest, as well as all our Jewish and Palestinian community that's present. Thank you.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, December 15, 2023.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move that we approve the minutes from Friday, December 15, 2023.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 5th, that we approve the minutes from Friday, December 2023. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Reference to Committee of Board Bills.
To the HUSS Committee, Board Bill 195, 196, 197, and 198. Public Infrastructure and Utilities Committee, Board Bill 193 and 194, and to Public Safety, Board Bill 199 and 200. That's the extent of reference to Committee of Board Bills.
Second reading, report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of HUSS Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 175 sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and ordinance repealing ordinance number 66221, Section 8, ordinance number 66236, Section 5, ordinance number 66420, Section 6, ordinance number 66565, Section 4, ordinance number 6664, Section 4, respectively was dissolving the Special allocations fund for Highlands at Forest Park, the town homes, Maryland Plaza South, Gaslight Square East, I-55 Lofborough redevelopment areas, and respectively terminating the designation of certain portions of the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as redevelopment areas and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Board Bill 183 sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and ordinance determining the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress except as noted under the proposed time schedule for completion of projects therein. The following board bills were reported out of Public Infrastructure and Utilities Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 147 sponsored by Alderwoman Keys and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in Windsor Place from Grand Boulevard to Spring Avenue, a 10-foot-wide road known as Highway Strip from Windsor Place northward to Spring Avenue located in City Block 3709, Bell Avenue from Grand Boulevard to Spring, St. Onfoston Street from Windsor Place to Bell Avenue, and Wright Avenue from Grand Boulevard to Spring Avenue in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described, in accordance with the Charter authority and in conformity with Section 14 of Article 21 of the Charter, and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 190 sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd and ordinance directing the director of streets pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by the ordinance number 71394 to install speed humps on the 1500 block of Powell Street. That's the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
Report of special committees.
We have none.
Can dispense with line item 15. Board Bills for Perfection Consent.
Board Bill 176 sponsored by Alderman Browning and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and ordinance recommended by the planning commission and approving an amended community unit for an area in the city of St. Louis comprising a portion of Washington University Medical Center, pledging cooperation from the Board of Aldermen and requesting various officials, departments, boards, and agency of the city to cooperate and to exercise their power in a manner consistent with the amended community unit plan authorizing and directing the taking of other actions and approval and the execution of other documents that's necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent thereof and the amended community improvement, I'm sorry, community unit plan. Board Bill 122 sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian. for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel and sever court from Goodfellow Boulevard West is terminated in the city of Saint Louis, Missouri as herein after describing accordance with the Charter Authority and in conformity with section one four of Article of twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill, I'm sorry, Board Bill one seventy-three sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd and Alderman Aldridge and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, amending ordinance number six two eight eight five to direct the reallocation of encumbered funds held in twenty-eight subaccounts of the Ward Capital Improvement Account of the Capital Improvement Sales Tax Trust Fund to fourteen subaccounts of such account that corresponds to the new fourteen wards with the amounts allocated to the new subaccounts determined by geographical overlay of the formal wards with new wards. That's the extent of Board Bills for perfection consent calendar.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Board Bills for the perfection consent calendar. Oh, Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Point of order, I want Board Bill one seventy-three removed from the perfection consent calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, could you please place one forty-three on the regular-
One seventy-three.
One seventy-three on the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Board Bills for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the Board Bills for perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fifth, that we adopt the Board Bills on the perfection consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Ald, I'm sorry. Alderman Browney. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Indeed, you had to have culture a whole.
Alderman Aldridge.
Alderwoman.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderwoman Keys. Thirteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman of the tenth to adopt the Board Bills on the perfection consent calendar. Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill one seventy-three sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd and Alderman Aldridge and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and Apportionment, amending ordinance number six two eight eight five to direct the reallocation of encumbered funds held in twenty-eight subaccounts of the Ward Capital Improvement Account of the Capital Improvement Sales Tax Trust Fund to the fourteen subaccounts of such account that corresponds to the new fourteen new wards with the amounts allocated to the new subaccounts determined by geographical overlay of the former wards with the new wards.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth, you are recognized on Board Bill one seventy-three.
Thank you, Madam President. I am asking that this bill goes on informal calendar because I want to push for a special committee to dig deeper into the Ward Capital because we have had a history of more money that we found that was missing. So if we could do that, I would appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, if you could please place Board Bill one seventy-three on the informal calendar. Cue. Report of engrossment.
Board Bill ninety-eight. I'm sorry, we have none.
Third reading and final passage of Board Bill's consent.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was right. That is Board Bill ninety-eight.
Okay. Third reading and final passage of Board Bill's consent.
Board Bill ninety-eight.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third reading final passage of Board Bill's consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fifth that we adopt the aforementioned Board Bills on the third reading and final passage consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanyay. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browney. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderwoman Keys. Thirteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the tenth to a third read and finally pass the aforementioned Bills. Third reading and final passage of Board Bills.
We have none.
Reported, the finally passed, and signed by the President.
Board Bill ninety-eight.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix her signature here to the end that these may become law. First reading of resolutions in reference to committees.
Resolution one seventy-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Investigation into the closing of Northview Village Nursing Home.
Alderwoman from the twelfth, you are recognized on Resolution one seventy-eight.
Madam President, members of the board, Resolution one seventy-eight is an investigation into the closing of, I'm sorry. I am requesting that we send Resolution one seventy-eight to committee, the appropriate committee, which I believe is the Health Committee. And it's an investigation into the closing of Northview Village Nursing Home, which is right across the street from my house and has been there for thirty-something years. I want to thank the people who donated to the workers. They were unceremoniously dismissed back in the middle of September, I'm sorry, of December, I think December fifteenth. But the thing that also happened is that the residents were moved in the middle of the night on December fifteenth in freezing cold weather from six o'clock in the evening to five o'clock in the morning with no notice. There are federal laws about closing nursing homes which require if you voluntarily close a nursing home, you have sixty days. Involuntarily, by the state, is thirty days. None of that was given to the people who reside at the nursing home and none of that was given to the employees who work at the nursing home. Many of the employees were just told not to come back or to leave. They stayed there. They tried to help the patients as they were transferred. People did not know where their loved ones were transferred to. They weren't notified. There was a man that went missing and thank God, after I wrote this resolution, they found him three weeks later. That is unacceptable and we need to know what happened and what we can do to make sure that does not happen again to the people who live in the nursing home.
Sorry, I thought you were pausing.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I can't breathe very well. The people who live in the nursing home, but also to the workers. Can you imagine losing your job? You going in to work that day? They didn't pay you. We did raise a fund. We did help, were able to help them out some. They've gotten paid one week, one paycheck, but they haven't gotten the other one. They haven't got their accrued benefits. This is unsatisfactory. We have what's known as a strike fund, but normally unions don't have a just-close-down fund. So I really need help in, from this board in a formal investigation as to what was going on. I sent letters to the owners. I've been there. I've been the alderperson there since they first opened in nineteen ninety-two and I've worked with them and so they didn't give anybody any notice and that is just completely unacceptable. And I'm asking that Board Bill one seventy-eight be sent to committee for an informal investigation.
There's, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twelfth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we place Board Bill one seventy-eight in the Health Committee. Is there any discussion? Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank Alderwoman Tyus for her leadership on this issue. I've seen it in the media. I know what you did to start that fund yourself. And I would like to be added as co-sponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Also want to echo Alderwoman from the seventh. We were, I was at the press conference where Alderwoman Tyus like started the fund and then just put up a little money. She put up five thousand dollars of her personal fund and then she was like, for y'all young people, y'all got Cash App. So I was like, yeah, I ain't got no chip to write no five thousand dollars, but I appreciate her leadership on this and SEIU and all individuals who have been making sure these workers who deserved their paycheck that was not given to them and fired immediately and residents just scrambled everywhere that this is not an issue that's going away and I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, if you could also add me as a co-sponsor. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twelfth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we place one seventy-eight. Resolution number one seventy-eight to the Health Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman from the twelfth, you are recognized on Resolution one seventy-nine.
Madam President, members of the board, if I could have Resolution one seventy-nine read, please.
Madam Clerk, if you could please read Resolution one seventy-nine.
Resolution one seventy-nine honoring Dolly M. Townsend on occasion of her ninetieth birthday and in recognition of sixty-six years of service. Whereas Ms. Dolly M. Townsend was born January thirteenth, nineteen thirty-four, the oldest of three children born to Ms. Townsend Owens and Mr. Townsend. Her parents and twin brothers, Henry and Hank Harvey, have passed away. Whereas Dolly attended Lincoln University High School in Lincoln, Illinois, where she received her diploma. Whereas Dolly later attended Homage Hospital Training for Nursing and in nineteen fifty-five, at the age of twenty, received a certificate in nursing. However, she had to wait until she was twenty-one years of age by the state of Missouri in order to receive her nurse's license. At the age of twenty, Dolly was also the class president. In nineteen sixty-six, she graduated from Washington University with the Bachelor of Science degree in nursing. She is a member of the Northern Missionary Baptist Church located at thirty-three thirty-three Clara Avenue in Saint Louis, Missouri under the leadership of Dr. Harold J. Butler and current Pastor Reverend Robert L. Gillespie and First Lady Victoria Gillespie. Whereas Ms. Townsend worked for the City of Saint Louis Division of Corrections as a nurse at the City of Saint Louis City Jail where her duties included tuberculosis screening, general resident care, custody of pre-trial detainees, prisoner intake for confinement, and preparing the monthly shift report. Whereas Dolly later joined the Health Department as a permanent position in the Community Disease Outreach Nurse where her duties include going out to the community to ensure people were tested and received medication for tuberculosis and field work in which she was assigned to several different neighborhoods and school sites. She also maintained student health records in a school-based setting. Whereas Dolly was a member of the City of Saint Louis Citizens Academy, the Missouri Silver Hair Legislation, the top ladies of distinction that was initiated with the Om Krom Theta Omega Chapter of the Divine Nine Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority for thirty-five years. Whereas July ninth, twenty ten, she retired from the City of Saint Louis Department of Health after fifty-five years of nursing in various locations throughout the city of Saint Louis metropolitan area. She has resided in the Kingsway East neighborhood for over forty years. Thirty-eight of those years, she lived directly across the street from the primary sponsor of this resolution and is a great neighbor and wonderful person. Whereas Saturday, January the thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, Ms. Dolly M. Townsend was ninety years of age and such an accomplished, deserved accomplishment. I'm sorry, acknowledgement. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Saint Louis that we pause in our deliberation to wish Ms. Dolly M. Townsend a happy, blessed ninetieth birthday. We also wish to acknowledge her fifty-five years of respect, loyal, faithful, and dedicated service as a nurse in which twenty-two of those years she was employed with the City of Saint Louis. We recognize her many years of dedication and commitment to service has made you a pillar in our community and unwavering service will forever be remembered. We further direct the clerk of the Board of Aldermen to spread a copy of the resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and prepare a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to our honoree at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce the twelfth day of January, twenty twenty-four by the Honorable Sharon Tyus, Alderwoman of the twelfth ward.
Alderwoman from the twelfth, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. This was important to me because when people start to turn ninety and a hundred, it's an important time. Ms. Dolly Townsend not only lives across the street from me for thirty-eight years, but in doing her resolution, I discovered Lincoln, Illinois is only about eight miles from where I grew up, Decatur, Illinois. I didn't know she came from central Illinois. But what I do know that is she's one of the most caring, faithful, loyal, outgoing, experienced leaders I've ever seen in my life. She cares about things deeply. She would go that extra mile. She wants things to be correct. She had three dogs that she loved. And as people get older, sometimes people tend to not take enough time to get to know who they are. I'm fortunate. On my end of Maffet Place, we've been in our house thirty-eight years and people, we're one of the newest people. So the people have been there for a long time. I respect that a lot of them had to fight to be able to live there because they had restrictive covenants on Maffet Place that black people couldn't live there. And they fought that battle. Ms. Dolly, and we call her Ms. Dolly, Ms. Dolly would do anything for anybody. She worked in the city jails. She worked in the city schools. Whatever she could do, she was there. She's now in a nursing home recuperating from an illness. I hope to see her home soon. She's going to have a surprise birthday party tomorrow. I probably won't be able to go since I'm not feeling well. But I just wanted to be able to have a conversation about how important it is as we age that we have people acknowledge that these are the people that made it possible for myself and other people to follow behind and they do fantastic things and sometimes they're not acknowledged and for her to be turning ninety and then to also have been served so long in service as a nurse is just fantastic to me. And so I just wanted to speak to that and I've asked that we pass Resolution one seventy-nine out.
Would you like to request unanimous consent?
Yes, I would like to request unanimous consent.
Hearing no objection, Alderwoman, you can now, you're now recognized on the motion.
I renew my motion to pass Resolution one seventy-nine.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the twelfth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the tenth, that we adopt Resolution one seventy-eight. Any, sorry, one seventy-nine. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading of resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
Resolution one thirty-seven, committee sub sponsored by Alderman Aldridge, President Green, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Keys, Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderman Con and Alderwoman Sanyay.
Alderwoman, or Alderman from the fourteenth, you are recognized on the second reading of Resolution.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and members of the board. I would ask if the clerk could read the resolution.
Resolution one thirty-seven, committee sub calling on the President to work towards a ceasefire in Gaza. Whereas all human life is precious and targeting civilians, no matter their faith or ethnicity, is a violation of international humanitarian law. Whereas the temporary truce that came to an end on Friday, December first, demonstrated that a negotiated ceasefire is the only way to release all hostages, deliver aid, stop bombing, and save lives. And whereas hundreds of thousands of lives are at imminent risk if a ceasefire is not achieved and humanitarian aid is not delivered without delay. And whereas the federal government hold immense diplomatic power to save Israeli and Palestinian lives and should utilize that power to that effect. Whereas we unequivocally condemn the brutal attacks by Hamas and on and on Israel on October seventh, we also condemn the response of Israel that led to the death of civilians, journalists, and healthcare workers. Whereas we deeply regret that- Whereas we deeply regret that military operations have resumed in Gaza and reiterate that all people, Israeli, Palestinian, and all others are entitled to life lived in safety and free from violence. And whereas the City of St. Louis condemns the recent rise of anti-semitism, anti-Palestinian racism, Islamophobia racism, homophobia, homo- homophobia, and xenophobia fueled attacks in our city and across the nation, including dogging of elected officials, student profess, professors, journalism, and others speaking truth to power. Whereas our constituents who reside in the City of St. Louis has made very clear that they want to see an end to this violence and want the U.S. to immediately demand a bilateral ceasefire. And whereas the ongoing conflict in Israeli and Gaza has led to a significant loss of lives, immense humanitarian crisis, and continue suffering for innocent civilians, including those with ties to St. Louis. Whereas Gaza is in dire humanitarian crisis that is getting worse with each passing day, with the only remaining hospitals running out of fuel, medical supplies, and millions of Palestinians face displacement, homelessness, and starvation. Whereas international organi- organizations like Amnesty International, the United Nations, the World Health Organizations, and International Rescue Committee may have others, and many others have made a call for ceasefire in order to prevent the further loss of lives of civilians and to be in accordance with international humanitarian law. And whereas we stand in urging the United States to act divisely, divisively by calling for an immediate bilateral ceasefire echoing the strong and urgent plea of our community for peace. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the City of St. Louis, supports members of Congress and the Biden Administration to deem an immediate bilateral ceasefire, release all hostages, and the unrestricted entry of humanitarian assistance in Gaza, and the restoration of food, water, electricity, and medical supplies, respect for international law, and calls for a resolution that protects the security of all innocent civilians. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to U.S. Senator Josh Hawley, U.S. Senator Eric Schmidt, U.S. President Joe Biden, U.S. Vice President Kamala Harris, urging them to take immediate action to use their position and influence to end violence. Introduce this twentieth day of October twenty-twenty-three, the Honorable Shamin, I'm sorry, Rashine Aldridge, Alderman of the fourteenth ward, and the following co-sponsors. Honorable Megan Green, President of the Board, Honorable Shane Coleman, I'm sorry, Honorable Shane Cone, Alderman of the third ward, Honorable Alicia Sanyay, Alderwoman of the seventh ward, Honorable Daniela Velazquez, Alderwoman of the sixth ward, Honorable Laura Keys, Alderwoman of the eleventh ward.
Aldermen from the fourteenth, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the committee. Uh, first, I want to thank a few members before I say any words. I do want to thank uh Alderwoman Daniela Velazquez for her leadership with uh working to call a committee hearing so people's voices can be heard. Um, she was very influential in also in this resolution and making sure that uh to the best of our ability, uh, understanding that um it's a lot of nuance for a lot of people that we were sensitive and that we actually got the language uh right. Also want to thank Alderwoman uh and Switzer, the first ward, who also was helpful in crafting uh this legis- legislation, a resolution, as well as the leadership of uh President Megan Green, who facilitated uh conversations. I want to give a huge thank you to uh the Palestinian community. Um, I know this is, I really don't have words for it, I know there's a lot of pain in this room. I look at my friend Avine right now, uh, who we've had plenty of conversations about what's happening um over in Gaza, but I want to uh thank you all um in helping make sure that uh the language that is in this resolution, while it may not be perfect, um, understanding that this Board of Aldermen, we won't always everything, but y'all commitment, um, as the war is going on, as family members are being killed, um, as friends and children and hospitals and so many others are being killed, uh, thank you for your leadership in helping with this legislation. Also want to thank members of our uh Jewish community, uh, who have been standing in solidarity as well, uh, and help with the right language to craft uh this resolution. I think uh in this resolution, what we've shown is uh leadership and trying to uh let our community know in the City of St. Louis, um, our Jewish community, our Palestinian community, that as I continue to say, we see you, we hear you, we love you, and we support you. For the ones that say this isn't a St. Louis issue, I would beg to differ as I look around this room right now and all our wards and residents and as we had the uh committee hearing, we had uh a swath of support from various wards, north, south, east, and west of the city. We have members in our community that uh are business owners, Palestinian business owners, Jewish business owners. Our Jewish community, uh, you know, work here, they play here, our Palestinian community work here and play here, and right now, there's a lot of pain. Um, and even though there's resolution, um, you know, don't go as far to ease some of that pain, uh, I hope what it does is again to let the people in the City of St. Louis know, our Palestinian community, our Jewish community, we see you, we hear you, we support you, and we love you. And it's truly been an honor to work with both sides to learn ultimately more about what's happening and learn some of my ignorance, uh, and lack of knowledge of what is going on in Gaza and the West Bank and what's going on in Israel. So, uh, as Alderman of the fourteenth ward, I am honored that I've been able to been educated and uh able to stand in solidarity uh with both communities to try to, from my point of a leadership as an Alderman, to try to help out and do something. And to my colleagues, I've spent countless hours with, uh, talking with, thank you. Uh, it's been pushed back from some of my colleagues to also make sure that the language in this resolution is correct, to try to be as sensitive as possible, and I don't take that for granted. Uh, I appreciate my colleagues for the help on this, I appreciate the Palestinian community for the help on this, I appreciate the Jewish community for the help on this, and I will end again by saying, this Board of Aldermen, we see you, we hear you, we support you, and we do love you. Thank you.
Aldermen, do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution one thirty-seven.
It's been moved by the Aldermen from the fourteenth, seconded by the Aldermen from the third, that we adopt Resolution one thirty-seven, committee substitute, is there further discussion?
Shall we go in bank?
There's been a motion to make one thirty-seven, committee substitute in bank? Um, is there any objection to that? Seeing none, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. It's just, that means everybody's name is on it, doesn't-
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Varma. Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanyay.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Brownie.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
Alderwoman, I'm sorry, President Green. Alderman Orion. Alderman Varma. Alderwoman Keys. Twelve, aye vote.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the fourteenth to adopt Resolution one thirty-seven, committee substitute. Congratulations.
We have none.
Announcements?
Free, free, post-stime!
January, Monday, January the fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, the office- Monday, January the fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, the office will be closed in honor of Dr. Moore Holliday. Wednesday, January the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, Public Infrastructure Utilities, we have a committee hearing in the Kennedy Room at three-thirty P.M. Friday, full board meeting, I'm sorry, Friday, January the nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, full board meeting in the Kennedy Room at ten A.M. That's the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements?
Uh, my hand is up.
Uh, Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, uh, Madam President, I know it's kind of hard because we on this video, so it's hard for you to see. Uh, I wanted to uh make an announcement and do condolences in regards to the young lady that was killed by her uh boyfriend and uh came missing and we, and they found her, Markeisha Tronell Williams. She's a young woman who was abducted and killed by the father of her four children, and the children's names are Noah, Nova, Noel, and Nolan Ivy. And so I would like to ask if we could take a brief moment of silence to uh uh respect their family and what they're dealing with at this time.
If you could please bow your heads in a moment of silence. Any further announcements? Aldermen from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, um, more of a uh, a thank you. Um, as some of you know, um, last Tuesday, uh, my mother suffered a, a major stroke, uh, which has really just been a horrible situation, um, still trying to grapple with it, she is uh stable but uh still very sedated and she's undergone several surgeries such as uh the removal of her skull, um, to reduce some of the swelling, the swelling is still there, but I just want to say thank you to this Board of Aldermen, um, you know, sometimes we disagree on legislation, but uh I've been wrapped with love uh from each and every one of you, I do not take it for granted, uh, it means the world to me, um, as I smile on the inside is definitely tough, or smile on the outside is definitely tough on the inside, but to this board, to the staff, um, to everyone in City Hall, uh, to everyone that's been reaching out, um, those prayers are helping and I know that will help her recover, but um, thank you to my Board of Aldermen, family and staff, and many others that have reached out, so thank you.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I just want to give a reminder about our town hall for the seventh ward on January seventeenth at, um, it starts at five-thirty, we'll have some folks from the Boards and Commission, a resource fair from five-thirty to six, where Boards and Commissions will tell us about vacant positions, I want to see us, you know, filling these positions, filling these vacant boards, we'll have some folks from the Community Development Administration about resource for small businesses and homeowners, um, or homeownership opportunities, and then we'll also have um someone from St. Patrick's Center to kind of talk about some of the things you may be able to do for the unhoused, and then at six o'clock, our town hall will begin, it is focused on housing justice and sustainable development, and we will have childcare and refreshments as usual.
Any further announcements? Aldermen from the third.
Thank you, Madam President, I would like to uh announce two upcoming town halls, uh, one is tomorrow, um, taking place at the Crondelet Library, it's a joint town hall between myself and the Alderwoman from the third ward, Anne Schweitzer, uh, it is tomorrow, twelve-thirty to two P.M. at the Crondelet Library at six eight hundred Avenue, we will be having uh guest speakers from the Police Department and the Behavioral Health Bureau there, um, so look forward to um joining with neighbors and talking more about that. And then the following Saturday, um, mark your calendars, I'm having a joint town hall with the Alderwoman from the sixth ward, um, Alderwoman Velazquez, and uh that will be taking place January twentieth, uh, will be addressing nuisance properties, vacancies, and public safety, and that will be at the Habitat for Humanity headquarters at Grand and Chippewa.
Alderwoman from the tenth.
Thank you so much, Madam President, members of the board, I would like to make sure that we remind everybody that we're with the King Day coming up, day on, not a day off, and I was reminded by Rabbi Susan Talby this morning about um our call for a shared garment of destiny. So I encourage you and all of our neighbors to look for events that are going on, there are a number of them in the tenth ward with Fountain Park, um, under the leadership of Dr. Derek Perkins and Centennial Christian Church, the Urban League is having something, of course, we have the big one downtown at the courthouse, but just make sure that you find a way to celebrate um and live on in his legacy, and then I also, we're with the King's legacy, I want to make sure I speak that. And also on Saturday is the Empower twenty-twenty-four Resource Fair, uh, given by our St. Louis City Treasurer, Treasurer Adam Lane, Office of Financial Empowerment, um, it's going to be hosted by our very own Cedric the Entertainer and Freddie Figures, a self-made millionaire who was literally thrown away as a, as a baby when he was born and has now, um, brought not only himself up but chooses to come back to communities such as ours and give back. There'll be utility assistance, free Narcan and overdose education, the St. Louis Housing Authority, uh, will be there with their programming, COVID vaccinations from Afenia, Head Start, um, you'll be given free electronics, and again, the uh, the opportunity to engage with Cedric the Entertainer and Freddie Figures, so this is a free event and you can still uh register and come, and that's at SLU uh University Campus at the Wool Ballroom on Saturday from eleven to two.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Uh, Alderwoman from the sixth.
Uh, just want to let people know that on Wednesday, the seventeenth, Tower Grove South Neighborhood Association in conjunction with the Tower Grove East uh Neighborhood Association in the South Grand Sid will be having a meet and greet at Rooster, um, from six to, I'm sorry, six-thirty to eight P.M.
Any further announcements? Any further announcement? Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, I move that we excuse the orders from the fourth and the eleventh ward for necessary absence.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the sixth, that we uh excuse the aforementioned alderpeople, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, I move that we adjourn until Friday, January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Aldermen from the fourteenth, that we adjourn until Friday, January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, we are adjourned.